Regular meeting number 20 will now come to order. May we have the playing of the National Anthem? Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this week, we, I see his name on here, so I think we've got our tech figured out. We are joined by Pastor Vince Ford, Senior Pastor of Genesee Church of Christ, to lead us in prayer. Pastor Ford, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Welcome to council, and the virtual microphone is yours.
Thank you. Good to be here again. Thank you for the invitation. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you, and we thank you for another day that was not promised. We thank you for the ability to come together in this manner. Dear God, I'm just so thankful in this moment that although things have changed on our, on this earth, the work has not stopped. I'm asking, dear God, that we move with a spirit of peace, that we move with a spirit of kindness, dear God, that we put things in order that will help strengthen our communities, give us the ability to be at peace with one another, dear God. We ask that you, that you lend a hand of comfort to those who have lost loved ones, dear God, at the hands of sickness and violence, dear God. We're asking that other leaders make decisions that best benefit the people, dear God, and to keep the people first, because we know without the people, none of us would be here. We thank you so much. We love you dearly, and in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ford. We appreciate your tone setting for the rest of our council meeting tonight. Thank you for joining us. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy Tyson, Present, Pro Tem Brown.
Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So moved.
So I guess.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy Tyson, Present, Pro Tem Brown.
This week's communications received by the city's clerk are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
None at this time.
Thank you. Are there any resolutions by my colleagues, members of council? Councilmember Mitch Brown?
None this evening.
Councilmember Dorance?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Favor?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Brown. Tonight, I'm bringing a resolution and sponsorship with, a cosponsorship with Councilmember Tyson. So let me allow, turn the floor over to Councilmember Tyson to kick us off.
Councilmember Tyson?
Okay, yes, I'd be off of you. Thank you. I wasn't thinking I was up yet. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm going out of order. So we have Resolution Number 82X-2021, and it is to designate May as Mental Illness Awareness Month in the City of Columbus, and to recognize the work of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Franklin County, and the Pediatric Mental Health and Other Related Services offered by Nationwide Children's Hospital. Whereas mental health is essential to our overall health, and the importance of attending to mental health has become even more pronounced during the COVID-19 epidemic, which has not only negatively impacted many people's mental health, but also has created barriers to treatment. Millions of adults and children across America experience mental health conditions, including anxiety, depression, schizophrenia, bipolar disease, and post-traumatic stress disorder. One in five Americans lives with a mental health condition, and those living with mental health conditions are our family, friends, classmates, neighbors, and coworkers. And one of the guiding principles of community, community mental health care, I'm sorry, of community, I'm sorry, of community, community mental health care has been its commitment to a comprehensive consumer responsive delivery of services. And whereas NAMI, Franklin County, provides education, support, and advocacy to individuals with mental illness and their family of caregivers, regardless of their client's age, gender, race, ethnicity, religious, or economic status. The organization has worked to raise awareness about mental health, mental illness, and has continued to fight against the stigmas that are associated with mental illness. NAMI has expanded its work during the month of May to include 15 billboards around Franklin County to promote mental health awareness, and partnered with the African-American Mental Health Beauty and Barber Campaign to create a drive to raise awareness for an additional 50,000 people, and expanded its work beyond the school with the Sources of Strength Initiative to include community-based programs in kids-centered places like recreation centers and other spaces. The program provides a year-round training and mental health support to adults and kids. And whereas Nationwide Children's Hospital, formerly known as Children's Hospital of Columbus, opened in 1892, it is now a nationally-ranked pediatric acute care teaching hospital located on the south side of Columbus with 673 pediatric beds, providing comprehensive pediatric specialties and subspecialties to infants, children, teens, and young adults aged zero to 21. The hospital features a designated Level One Pediatric Trauma Center and provides trauma, grief, violence, juvenile justice, family support services, pediatric mental health services, and more to its patients. Nationwide Children's Hospital has been ranked as one of America's best children's hospitals by the U.S. News and World Report, and in 2020, it was ranked as the seventh-best overall children's hospital in the United States. And whereas COVID-19 pandemic has a resulting economic crisis has impacted the mental health of millions of Americans, isolation, sickness, grief, job loss, food instability, and loss of routines has increased the need for mental health services. The pandemic has reminded us of the vital role that our mental health plays in our emotional, physical, and psychological well-being. It has raised our awareness regarding mental illness and the importance of family and community, and highlighted the limited access to mental health services and other care services that are often out of reach for underserved communities. Now therefore be it resolved by this council of the City of Columbus, this council does hereby designate May as Mental Illness Awareness Month in the City of Columbus, and recognize the work of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Franklin County, and the Pediatric Mental Health and Other Related Services offered by Nationwide Children's Hospital. And be it further resolved that this council hereby does thank the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Franklin County and the Nationwide Children's Hospital for the education, support, and advocacy that they have provided to improve the mental health of residents of Columbus and Franklin County. And moreover, this council expresses its ongoing commitment to ensuring that the people living with mental health conditions are treated with compassion, respect, and understanding. This council is acutely aware of the disparities experienced by the underserved communities and communities of color, and expresses its ongoing support for organizations that provide and ensure access to affordable, quality, and evidence-based mental health services. I move for adoption.
Second.
And now, I'm sorry.
Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy Tyson, Present, Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you. And now, we have two speakers, and I know Ms. Rochelle Martin from NAMI Franklin County, and then representing Nationwide Children's is Danisha Washington, who was a clinical coordinator for Family Support Program, Shannon Reinhardt from Behavioral Healthcare, Juvenile Justice, and Sheri Uncapper. From, she's a clinician from the Family Support Program. And so if Ms. Martin wants to come forward, and then Councilmember Favor, I don't know if you want to begin to say a few words before our speakers, or do you want to say some words after our speakers? What would you?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, for your partnership to co-sponsor this resolution. Our mental health is always important, but especially during these extraordinarily difficult times we're experiencing in our society today. I particularly wanted to focus on the mental health and well-being of our young people. A few weeks ago, I was joined by my colleagues, Council President Pro Tem Brown and Councilmember Tyson, for a town hall with Columbus youth to discuss some of the concerns and issues they've had throughout the past year. During this conversation with our youth, we heard about some of the challenges they are experiencing around mental health. The young people who joined us were vulnerable and brave enough to share their stories, and I believe it's critical that we continue to provide them with the support they need to lead healthy lives. We were also joined during that town hall by specialists that I'm so excited that we have here tonight with us from Nationwide Children's Hospital to help facilitate part of that conversation with our youth. So it's now my honor to turn it over to Ms. Washington and Ms. Reinhardt today to talk about the work that they're doing around Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you so much for having us. We are honored to be here. I am Shannon Reinhardt. I supervise the Behavioral Health Juvenile Justice Program. And so just to give you a quick description of what we do, we are advocating for justice-involved, justice-involved youth, so any youth that could benefit from mental health services. We assess those youth. We identify what the treatment needs are for those youth, and then we help to get them linked with the appropriate services in hopes that they will have a short time involved with the juvenile justice system. I want to thank the Councilmembers Favor and Tyson so much for this. We really feel honored, and to the entire Columbus City Council for recognizing pediatric mental health in this way. We're thrilled to accept this resolution on behalf of Children's Hospital and the hundreds of team members who are working to help children and families that are struggling. As social workers focused on juvenile justice and trauma and grief, Danisha and I know the importance of prioritizing the mental health needs of our youth. We understand how valuable the community can be in supporting this endeavor. So I want to say that we are looking forward to collaborating on this shared goal. And I think Danisha has a few words as well.
Thanks, Shannon. My name is Danisha Washington, and as mentioned before, I'm the clinical coordinator for the Family Support Program at Nationwide Children's Hospital. And so our team really focuses on child maltreatment, those youth that have experienced some form of physical abuse, sexual abuse, traumatic grief, and have witnessed violence. And so as Shannon mentioned, our teams really focus on those juvenile justice, grief, and trauma aspects. And within the past 14 months, Nationwide Children's Hospital has treated more children than any other period before. And so as we talked, you know, the community, this community in Franklin County really is the village for the children and the teens. And we want, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to share in that with you all. You can certainly further influence and be influenced by, through signing up with the On Our Sleeves National Campaign. So as mentioned before by Councilwoman Tyson, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and On Our Sleeves is kicking off this month with the 1 Million Classrooms Project. And that project provides free, evidence-based, mental health and mindfulness resources in this Franklin County community, as well as across the country. And if you'd like to join and the community would like to participate, all you have to do is sign up at onoursleeves.org, and you can continue to help be an advocate for children and teens in this community and around the country. And we just again want to say thank you, Columbus City Council, for this recognition today. We are very humbled.
Thank you so much. We truly appreciate it, and we've already passed the resolution. So I think we're good to go. Thank you both for the work that you continue to do advocating in this space, and thank you, Councilmember Tyson, for your partnership. Councilmember Pro Tem Brown, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Favor. Councilmember Tyson?
Yes. So I do have another resolution, and I don't know, but I wanted to also just say thank you to Ms. Washington. When we were meeting on the Commission on Black Girls, she had the opportunity to present to the Commission on Black Girls around the, in this area of mental health. And again, just want to thank her and her team for the work that they're doing each and every day to support our girls. Do you want, so thank you very much. And President Pro Tem Brown, do you want me to go to? So now I want to ask Ms. Rachel Martin to be able to make some comments regarding Mental Health Awareness Month. You see Ms. Martin?
I do not see Rochelle Martin listed with a microphone. It looks like she might have some trouble with her audio.
Okay. Well, we could just, I guess, move to Councilmember Remy. I have another resolution tonight, so maybe she will, maybe by then, maybe her situation will be different. How about that?
Sure. I will, Councilmember Remy has an announcement, so we'll kick it back to him. And then you, I have 0068X as another resolution by you, Councilmember Tyson. So we'll do that after. Councilmember Remy?
Thank you so much, President Pro Tem Brown. I just have one announcement this evening. My, we will be holding virtual community hours on Wednesday, or I'm sorry. It's the 18th, whatever day of the week that is, coming up. And that looks like a Tuesday from 4:00 to 5:30. I would encourage anyone that wants to be involved to contact Lucy Frank, my legislative assistant, at LJFrank@columbus.gov. That's LJFrank@columbus.gov. Please include your interests and what topic you'd like to speak about, so we can have the prepared resources available. And she will make sure that you are reserved and get the link ahead of the meeting. That's all I have this evening. Thanks so much, President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Tyson, would you like to do your other resolution while we wait on technical difficulties?
Yes, I will. So I have another resolution this evening. It is Resolution Number, it's Resolution Number 68X-2021, is to honor and to congratulate the Franklin County Children's Services Maleka Mentoring Program on the 25th, on 25 years of dedicated service to African-American girls in this community. Whereas the Franklin County Children's Services Maleka Program was created May 15th of 1995 as a mentoring program for girls five to 18 years of age. This program is designed to answer and address the disparities faced by African-American girls served by the Franklin County Children's Services. And whereas the Franklin County Children's Services has expanded its commitment to improving the quality of life and outcomes for black girls, embracing the Commission on Black Girls' aim of preventing abuse and neglect and the intersectionality of racism through the creation of community-level advocacy programs which bridge pathways that positively transform the lives of black girls and girls collectively. And whereas over the 15, over the years, Franklin County Children's Services has become acutely aware of the risk factors of African-American girls involved in the child welfare system. The data shows that there are significantly higher birth rates for teens ages 10, 10 to 19 years of age. In fact, the rate of infant births is more than double for females 18 years and younger. This leads to an over-representation of females being served by the Franklin County Children's Services. There is also an over-representation of children in foster care, as well as lower graduation rates. Whereas with this understanding, Franklin County Children's Services have been providing volunteer and mentoring services to enrich the lives of children being served in Columbus and central Ohio for more than 50 years. FCSS recognizes that youth mentorship programs help young people to improve their self-esteem and enhance their relationships with family members and peers, ultimately helping them to feel a greater sense of connectedness with their community and their schools. Caring mentors offer youth valuable support, guiding them toward making positive, healthy life choices. Mentoring programs also offer effective student interventions, improving student attendance and behavior, academic performance, increase high school graduation rates in a significant number of instances, and culminate in college attendance. Whereas the Maleka Program matches African-American girls on a one-on-one basis with community-based African-American women who provide support and encouragement. The program helps girls to improve their self-esteem, establish academic excellence strategies, explore their career goals, and helps girls to develop a framework for their future. And whereas this program recognizes the power of positive relationship, the Maleka mentors are unapologetic about advocating, empowering, and supporting African-American girls. The program is committed to easing the transition of girls into womanhood. Whereas Maleka means Angel and Swahili, a term synonymous with the legacy of Sharon Burks, the founding director of the Maleka Mentoring Program, whose leadership helped shape the program involved over the last 25 years. The program continues to be a beacon of hope for African-American girls. And in 2015, the Maleka Advisory Committee with the Support of Franklin County Children's Services, Citizens Advisory Committee, and the Board of Trustees established a SOAR Community Service Award to honor Sharon's work and commitment. The mentorship program, under her direction and selfless service, has continuously reached back and lifted up angels who at the time were often unaware of the heights to which they were able to soar. Whereas a SOAR Award was created to recognize members of the community who are champions for African-American girls. SOAR stands for Spirited Advocate for African-American Girls, Outstanding Commitment to Community Building, Authentic Character, and A is for Authentic Character, and R, Resounding Passion, characteristics used to describe Sharon and the many volunteers of the Maleka Mentoring Program. Now therefore be it resolved by this council on the City of Columbus, this council does hereby honor and congratulate the Franklin County Children's Services Maleka Mentoring Program on 25 years of dedicated service to African-American girls in this community. Before I move for adoption, I know that we have Darryl Cobb here, who will introduce the FCCS team. He is the Director of the Semper Program. Mr. Cobb, the floor is yours.
President Pro Tem Brown, Councilmember Tyson, and members of council, good afternoon. I'm Darryl Cobb, Director of the Semper Mentoring Program. It is truly an honor and a pleasure to be before you once again to thank you for this acknowledgement. I have the distinct privilege to introduce my colleagues from Children's Services, Ms. Tanya Steele, Director of the Maleka Mentoring Program, and Mr. Charles Cochrane, Coordinator for the College Bound Mentoring Program. Ms. Steele?
Thank you so much, President Pro Tem Brown, Councilmember Tyson, and all those who serve our city council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. We are grateful for the acknowledgement of the work that we do in supporting one of our community's most vulnerable populations, our abused and neglected children. Again, that work is hard, and sometimes it goes with gratitude not being shown for the work that we do. And so again, I just thank you for extending the acknowledgement of our work. I come to you on behalf of the Maleka Mentoring Program, FCCS, our Executive Director, Chip Spinning, the African-American girls that we serve, the African-American women who serve as mentors in our program, and the Maleka Advisory Committee. On behalf of them, I humbly and graciously accept this resolution. What we know with this program is that is through our community collaborations that Maleka and other Franklin County Children's Services programs are able to provide this level of intervention and support to the children and the families that we serve. Our goal with the Maleka Mentoring Program, who again serves African-American girls who have a relationship with Franklin County Children's Services, continues to be opportunity where we are able to place those girls in spaces where their voices are heard and where they matter, where they can gain skills in the areas of personal and cultural growth, and where they can develop as leaders of our community. What we know is these young ladies won't forever be where they currently are in their lives. And so we're grateful for having this program, having mentors, African-American women in the community who step up to lead this charge and lead this work in supporting the efforts in raising up our African-American girls and showing them what they can be. And so again, as we continue the work of Maleka with the support of our community, I just want to say thank you, and I'm grateful, and I'm humbled again at this opportunity to receive the resolution. Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson, you're on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. If there are African-American women that would want to volunteer as mentors, how would they go about doing that?
Absolutely. We are always looking for strong African-American women who can come in and impart some of what they have to offer on our young ladies. And the way to become a mentor is to go to our website, and then they can go to our volunteer page. And there it will have information on our program, what, you know, what takes, what the qualifications are, and then how they can get in contact with us to find out more information about becoming a mentor.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership, and certainly want to thank those mentors that are giving their time. Thank you. Mr. Cobb, you have another speaker to present? I think you're on mute.
I'm on mute, yes. Mr. Charles Cochrane, who is the Coordinator for the College Bound Mentoring Program. Charles?
President Pro Tem Brown, Councilwoman Tyson, and members of city council. On behalf of Franklin County Children's Services, the Volunteer Department, and all current and past College Bound mentors, thank you for this, for this honor. It is my pleasure each day to lead this wonderful group of dedicated and committed volunteers who give of their time, energy, and resources to assist our agency youth in achieving their dreams. Because of their efforts, involved youth involved with our agency are able to understand that life holds options. College Bound Mentoring was created after the agency began providing the Jack Donahue Scholarship to agency youth who were headed off to college to pursue their dreams. Though funding is critical for these youth, the agency recognized that we must couple financial support with a caring relationship if we're truly going to help these youth succeed. Our mentors step up in incredible ways for the youth every day, and this recognition of their dedication is greatly appreciated. Thank you again for this honor, and I hope each of you remain safe and healthy during this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cochrane, in providing those opportunities for young people to be able to attend college and working with your volunteers. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Saying that again, thank you for your work in improving the lives of young people. I move for, I move for adoption.
Second. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy Tyson, Present, Pro Tem Brown.
Resolution adopted. Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. We will, sorry, finding my place here. Are there any comments by our elected officials?
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I'm sorry. I thought that maybe you were looking for, see if Ms.
Do you have one more?
No, not another resolution. I was thinking if Ms. Martin was attending, but I also just want to mention something else really quickly, if I could.
Yes, of course. Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's no problem. That's no problem. I just want to mention that this week is also the Trauma Informed Awareness Week, and there are a number of activities that our trauma team is being involved in this week. And I, I know Ms. Anita Clark is on the call, and if- And I I know Ms. Anita Clark is on the call, and if possible, Ms. Clark, would you want to share some of the initiatives that are going on this week with around trauma-informed awareness?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Councilmember Tyson. We are real excited about a clip that we're we're going to show called Push Out that starts on Wednesday at six o'clock to eight o'clock. And it's a wonderful film that talks about adultification with young black girls, and we're hoping that everybody can join. I can forward that information later to you, Councilmember Tyson. Be glad to share that. We are also doing a lot of work with our Care Coalition and out in the community as well. And we are really excited about the work that we're doing out in the community and our response to Ma'Kaya and our neighborhoods and surrounding per death and the schools and with teachers as well. So we've been connecting with the community. If anybody has any other additional needs, please reach out to me at AnitaC@columbus.gov.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. So there is going to be a social media campaign, so look for that and use hashtags like #WeCare, #ResilienceLooksLikeMe, #Essential, Columbus Care Coalition. There's going to be a sidewalk chalk campaign. And so show your resilience and draw a picture or write a message. This, and as she mentioned, there's going to be a community screening of Push Out, the criminalization of black girls in schools. And this is is written by, this film is by Dr. Monique Morris, our own Stephanie Patton, who's from Columbus City Schools, who used to be the Administrator for Columbus Preparatory School for Girls, is highlighted in this film, but also a lot of number of girls from Columbus. And of course, some other communities are highlighted in this. And as Ms. Clark mentioned, it does speak to the issue of adultification, but it also just shows the excessive punitive discipline that our girls are receiving in school systems. And then there's a request, if you have a request for a Care Coalition Trauma Responsive Care Training, we can reach out to Ms. Clark. And on Thursday, the thirteenth, there'll be a mindfulness and restoration for turbulent times. So again, there are a number of amazing activities this week to deal with trauma in our community. And thank you very much, Ms. Clark, and thank you, President Pro Tem Brown.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you for those announcements. So are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration? City Auditor, City Attorney? All right. At this time, I request that the following ordinances be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda. Zero zero eight one X dash twenty twenty-one in the Small and Minority Business Committee. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? All right, hearing none. May we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of thirty-day legislation by the city clerk?
So moved.
Clerk, call the roll. Oh, is there a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, zero nine seven eight nine eighty-five, nine ninety-one, ten thirty-nine, and eleven thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-one. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances nineteen eighty dash twenty twenty, and ordinances nine four six, nine five nine, nine eighty, ten fourteen, ten fifteen, ten twenty-three, ten twenty-four, ten twenty-five, ten twenty-seven, ten thirty-one, ten forty-six, ten fifty, ten fifty-two, ten sixty-three, ten sixty-nine dash twenty twenty-one. Technology Committee, ordinance nine nine six dash twenty twenty-one. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ten seventy-four dash twenty twenty-one. Economic Development Committee, ten ordinances, ten fifty-five, ten fifty-six, ten ninety-five dash twenty twenty-one. Administration Committee, eleven fifteen dash twenty twenty-one. And Zoning Committee, ordinances eleven thirty-two, eleven forty-five, eleven forty-seven, eleven forty-eight, eleven forty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, and ordinances twenty-eight oh one and twenty-eight oh two dash twenty twenty.
Thank you very much. I do not see any speakers tonight on first readings. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each consent action into the record?
Resolutions of Expression, seventy-eight X, sixty-nine X, seventy-five X dash twenty twenty-one. Finance Committee, two zero nine eight nine eight, nine nineteen, ten oh nine, ten twenty-eight, ten thirty-two, ten forty-seven, ten forty-nine, ten ninety-eight, eleven fourteen, eleven thirty-three, eleven forty-four, and eleven seventy-two dash twenty twenty-one. Recreation and Parks Committee, zero nine one four, zero nine two two, zero nine two three, zero nine two four, and zero nine two nine dash twenty twenty-one. Public Safety Committee, ordinances nine sixteen and nine seventy-four, ten ninety dash twenty twenty-one. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances six nine six, eight sixty-three, nine oh seven, nine twenty-eight, nine sixty-seven, ten fifty-four dash twenty twenty-one. Technology Committee, ordinances nine twenty, nine twenty-seven, nine seventy-three, ten twenty, ten seventy-five dash twenty twenty-one. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances eight six six, nine thirty-three, nine forty-five, nine seventy-one, nine seventy-nine, ten sixty-six, ten seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-one. Housing Committee, ordinances ten ten and ten sixty-four dash twenty twenty-one. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance six eight six dash twenty twenty-one. Economic Development Committee, ordinances nine nine three, ten sixty-five, ten ninety-four, eleven oh five, and eleven nineteen dash twenty twenty-one. Administration Committee, ordinance eleven fifty-six dash twenty twenty-one. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinances nine nine two, one thousand ten thirty-eight, ten fifty-seven, ten seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-one. Building and Zoning Policy Committee, ordinances ten twenty-one, eleven seventeen dash twenty twenty-one. And appointments from the Mayor's Office, A zero zero eight nine ninety and ninety-one dash twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Seeing no speakers on consent, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you. Consent agenda items are passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. I chair that committee, so I will take it away. We have ordinance nine zero eight dash twenty twenty-one to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Facilities Management Division to renew a contract with CBRE Government Services LLC for facility management services at the Jerry Hammond Center and the Franklin County Municipal Court Building to authorize the expenditure of one million one hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars from the Property Management Fund, to authorize the expenditure of one million five hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. Finance and Management has contracted for facility management at the Hammond, at Jerry Hammond Center and the Muti Court Building since two thousand seven. Under this contract, CBRE will be responsible for janitorial and security services at each location as well as the ongoing maintenance of the buildings, including establishing a capital investment plan. This ordinance represents the second of four annual renewal options established in the initial contract that was approved in two thousand nineteen. Future renewals will continue to be reviewed by council. Emergency actions being considered to prevent interruptions in the maintenance and services of each building. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you. Next is ordinance zero nine, uh, resolution, or legislation passed. Ordinance passed. I'm getting used to this, guys. Ordinance nine sixty-eight dash twenty twenty-one to authorize and direct the Director of Finance and Management to enter into an agreement with the Capitol Crossroads Special Improvement District to provide funding to the organization to develop downtown public restroom facilities in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to authorize the appropriation of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the CDBG CV fund to authorize the expenditure of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the CDBG CV fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will support the addition of three public restrooms downtown to help address the current limited access to also to support our vulnerable residents who are most in need of these facilities and to make our downtown a cleaner and more welcoming place to be. I'm excited to bring this funding forward, which recognizes that clean and secure public restroom facilities provide a level of dignity and comfort to individuals who often lack reliable access to these amenities, such as those experiencing homelessness. As we continue moving towards the end of pandemic restrictions, everyone, please make a plan to get vaccinated and encourage your loved ones to do the same, by the way. The return of conventions, sporting events, tourists, and workers to downtown is on the horizon. An expected increase in activities and people make this infrastructure to enhance the vibrancy and accessibility of downtown particularly important. An environmental review and community planning process will be completed before determining the exact locations of the new restrooms. And emergency actions is being considered tonight, so that work can begin very soon. Tonight, we are joined by Jason Gay with the Columbus Association for the Performing Arts to talk more about the impact of this work. Mr. Gay, are you on the?
Yes.
All right, we can hear you.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem Brown and council members. My name is Jason Gay. I currently serve on the Capitol Crossroads Special Improvement District Board, and I'm also the Vice President of Operations for Kappa. Before you tonight is consideration of a ordinance to enter into an agreement with the Capitol Crossroads CID for the purchase and installation of permanent public restrooms downtown. The Capitol Crossroads CID Board voted last week to execute an agreement, and we're hopeful that after tonight's meeting, we can begin work on this meaningful project. The lack of public restrooms has been a problem downtown for decades, and things have only gotten worse during COVID. We feel that our most vulnerable people downtown really need to have access to restroom facilities. Right now, they're often forced to go in locations that put their own health at risk and put the health of others at risk, including sometimes around the Capitol Buildings, unfortunately. We see the High Street Corridor is a high-need corridor for public restrooms. So if this project is approved, we'll enable the CID to purchase and oversee the installation of three to five attractive and easily accessible restrooms that will be available and open year-round. And I'm confident that the visitors to our downtown attractions, also Coda Bus riders and people in the community will be able to use these and appreciate that they're there for an amenity. Thank you for the consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gay, and we will open it up for questions. I want to hear from Lisa first, and then if there are any questions for either of you from my colleagues, we will entertain those then. We are not the only, I know that the Capitol Crossroads CID has done a tremendous amount of work learning about the accessibility of public restaurants in downtowns and how other cities have done this and looking at how it might work for Columbus, and I really want to thank them for that. So welcome Lisa Deffendifer with the Capitol Crossroads and Discovery Special Improvement Districts to talk a little bit more about the next steps in this process and what we can all expect to see in our downtown.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Brown and other council members for the opportunity to speak tonight. As Jason shared, lack of easily accessible public restrooms has been a problem for years downtown. And we're excited, the city's excited about the prospect of managing the purchase and installation of restrooms in high-need areas in the downtown. The CDBG CV funds will cover the cost in installation, as as Jason indicated, to up to five permanent public restrooms. The actual placement of these restrooms is going to really depend on several factors, including but not limited to ADA and right-of-way requirements and environmental review, community outreach, and utility access. And although we have a general idea right now of ideal locations, by no means are those locations set in stone right now. Assuming city council votes to approve this agreement tonight, the CID staff will begin community outreach process right away, probably tomorrow, and will begin reaching out to business owners, residents, and other downtown stakeholders in those high-need locations that, again, as Jason indicated, they're on or near the High Street Corridor. At the meetings, we'll be providing details on the restroom project, including the style of restrooms, how they will be maintained, safety considerations, et cetera. Additionally, we'll reach out to larger groups like the Downtown Residents Association of Columbus. And the feedback we receive will influence the placement of the restrooms along with other factors, such as, you know, where the utilities are located and the environmental reviews and that sort of thing. In addition to community outreach, CID staff is going to be beginning, will begin an architecture and engineering selection process this month. CID staff will solicit qualifications and select a firm in July, and design work will occur in July and August. This fall, restroom locations will be finalized by council and the Downtown Commission. And once locations are approved, CID staff will solicit construction bids and select a contractor in early two thousand twenty-two. Construction will begin in spring of two thousand twenty-two and be wrapped up by next fall. Still, a lot of work needs to take place and happen between now and fall of two thousand twenty-two. But we're really excited about having permanent public restrooms in our city and know people from all walks of life will view them as a sign of a first-class city. I'm grateful for city council's support of this, and if you have questions, I'm certainly available to answer them as well.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Gay or Ms. Deffendifer? All right. Well, thank you both. And I, you know, want to recognize that downtown is not the only area of the city which may benefit. So I, you know, I'm hopeful that upon successful completion of the project, the CID can stay in touch with us about how it's going. I know we'll we'll hear feedback from residents about how it's going and think about whether this work makes sense in other areas of the city. So thank you. I do see a question from Councilmember Remy.
Actually, I just want to make a couple of comments. I want to applaud your office, and I'm sure public service had a part of this. I know the CID came and spoke with me when I chaired public service and enlightened me on on this. And then subsequently, when we were back to traveling, had the opportunity to witness these things in other cities like San Antonio, for instance. And this, it's a really big need in talking with our business owners downtown. Not having the ability to utilize a restroom for many is problematic. And so I'm real excited to see this project move forward, very supportive of this project, and hope that this is just the beginning. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If none, then I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Ordinance passed. Next, we have ordinance ten ninety-three dash twenty twenty-one to authorize the city treasurer to renew its contracts for various banking services with J.P. Morgan Chase, Huntington, and Fifth Third Banks to authorize the expenditure of up to three million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars from various funds within the city and to declare an emergency. The city treasurer's office requested and received six proposals for various banking services in two thousand twelve. The Columbus Depository Commission reviewed the proposals and recommended awarding banking services to the banks named here in this ordinance. The initial contracts established were for ten years and subject to annual renewal by council beginning in two thousand thirteen. So this ordinance is the ninth renewal of that initial ten-year contract. Emergency actions being considered to prevent the interruption of services and keep our accounting and financial management records as current and accurate as possible. If there are no questions from colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you very much. Ordinance passed. And that is all I have in my committees. So I will, I got to figure out which committee. So I will, I got to figure out which committee is next here. It looks like Public Utilities is next, Councilmember Doran's.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. First, in the Public Utilities Committee, we have ordinance number 0872-2021 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities renew and increase the Professional Engineering Service Agreement with Hill International, Inc. for the Professional Construction Management Services 2018 Project for the Division of Water to authorize and transfer an expenditure of up to $5,429,700 within the Water General Obligation Bond Fund and to amend the 2020 Capital Improvement Budget. The current consultant has already provided both design phase and construction phase services for all projects assigned to this contract, which supports various projects currently under construction at the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant. These projects will maintain and upgrade drinking water supply and treatment facilities to provide a safe and reliable water supply to residents of central Ohio. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second, clerk call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance number 0926-2021 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify an existing professional engineering agreement with Arcadis U.S., Inc. for the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant Code Generation Project and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,299,989 in the Sanitary Sir General Obligation Bond Fund. This project provides design work to install a system that will use the facility's biogas, which is currently burned as a waste product, to create a large amount of electricity with that gas. The system will produce overall greenhouse gas emissions by more than 4,000 tons of equivalent CO2 every year. This green infrastructure improvement will also help protect the water quality of the Scioto River. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second, clerk call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Ordinance passed.
And finally, I have ordinance number 0986-2021 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to pay the State of Ohio Treasurer, Department of Natural Resources for operation and maintenance services and water entitlement costs for withdrawing water from the Allen Creek Reserve for the Division of Water to authorize expenditure of $1,370,694.19 from the Water Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. The City of Columbus has an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources allowing the Division of Water to withdraw water from the Allen Creek Reservoir and to pay the state a prorated share of the operation and maintenance costs. This agreement was entered into back in November 1971, long before I was born, and an annual payment is needed to keep the agreement in effect. This agreement is being submitted as emergency measure in order to meet the payment deadline of May 31, 2021. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second, clerk call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you, and that is all I have this evening, President Pro Tem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Doran's. Next, we have the Public Service Committee. Councilmember Favor chairs that committee.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Brown. Tonight, in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance 759-2021 to authorize the Director of Department of Public Service to execute a quitclaim deed and other incidental instruments prepared by the City Attorney's Office for the transfer of 499 square feet portion of the above-mentioned right-of-way to Brandon Shaw and Christina Nadassidi. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Before we hear testimony, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Director Steve Wenzel to provide us with background on this ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Favor, President Pro Tem Brown, members of council. The City of Columbus Department of Public Service received a request from Brandon Shaw and Christina Nadassidi, applicants and property owners of 554 South Grant Avenue to sell 499 square foot portion of city right-of-way. Sale of this right-of-way will be to incorporate it into their current parcel at 554 South Grant, which is owned by the homeowners with no specific development plans at this time. This is the landlocked portion of right-of-way at the northeast corner of their property, located just east of the Blichner and Grant Avenue intersection, which is just south of Livingston Avenue. Per current practice, the department solicited comments from interested parties, including city agencies, private utilities, and the appropriate area commission before it was determined that the city will not be adversely affected by the transfer of this right-of-way. The department also contacted adjoining property owners to notify them of the sale for the potential for them to acquire their half of the right-of-way. No adjoining property owners were interested in purchasing on their half of the portion of the right-of-way. The department has determined that there is not a need for public service to retain this right-of-way and has agreed to sell the right-of-way to the applicant. The department submitted a request to the City Attorney's Office, asking that they establish a value for this right-of-way, and a value of $24,500 or $50 per square foot was established based on comparable sales in the area. In accordance with City Code Chapter 328, the request to transfer the right-of-way was submitted to the Land Review Commission for approval. The Land Review Commission is comprised of nine members. Seven of the members are representatives from the Department of Development, the City Auditor's Office, the City Attorney's Office, the City Clerk's Office, the Department of Public Service, where I represent the commission, Recreation and Parks, and a representative from One Columbus. The two remaining members are realtors who reside within Franklin County and are appointed by the mayor with the approval of council. As I mentioned, Section 329 of the Columbus City Code governs the existence of the Land Review Commission and states that no department, office, board, or commission shall offer for sale any real property without seeking the approval for such action from the Land Review Commission. Some of the duties of the Land Review Commission are to receive written proposals to sell real property, to review those proposals for the sale of city right-of-way, which mitigating circumstances have been identified, giving due consideration to relevant factors, including but not limited to the appropriateness of the transaction affecting the particular right property in light of current or future city objectives or needs, the proposed development and use of the particular right-of-way or property, the fair market value estimated for the subject property, and mitigating circumstances that can be identified by the city which provide a public benefit that could result in the reduction or elimination of the purchase price for the property to be sold. This request went before the Land Review Commission, where the homeowner requested mitigation of the purchase price, citing that the area in question is landlocked and too small to build on and is used to access the garage. The homeowner also received comparable properties that sold around the area to argue that the $50 per square foot price was too high and that the right-of-way, if transferred, would result in some increase in property tax revenue for the city. At the November 2020 Commission meeting, and ultimately after review of all the data, a motion was made and the Land Review Commission voted and approved by a 6-3 margin to recommend the above-referenced right-of-way be transferred to the homeowner, Brandon and Christina, at a cost of $12,475 or $25 per square foot. That's roughly half the value that was established by the City Attorney's Office. We felt that this is a fair and reasonable price for the piece of property that was to be sold. This ordinance is being submitted to City Council by public service based on the recommendation of the Land Review Commission and for council approval. I or the other commissioners on the call would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel, for that, for providing that background information on this specific situation. Before we hear from the City Attorney's Office, I believe Ms. Christina is on the call and would like to provide a brief testimony. Do we have Christina?
Yeah. Hello?
Hello, are you there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and turn the floor over to you for testimony at this time.
All right. I don't know if my video is supposed to be working, but I don't think it is. But I'm here, I'm Christina Nadassidi, and I have Brandon Shaw with me. We own the house together at 554 South Grant. So we, I marked that I was against the ordinance on my speaker slip, but we are definitely for it. We would like to buy this property, it's really important to us, but the reason that we decided to speak today is just to describe, I guess, our arguments in terms of what we believe are fair prices and to ask the City Council to consider that price and, and, and yes. And we just want to make sure that we explored all of our options to reduce the price because this is a big deal for us and it's a big expenditure for us, so we just want to make sure we kind of covered all of our bases. So the parcel itself, as you already know, is a small landlocked rectangle, it's 499 square feet, and it's part of our driveway and required for access through the garage. And from what we've been able to gather, it's been under exclusive use of our property for decades at this point. And I think in the packet that I circulated, there's a picture of our driveway that just shows approximately where the parcel is. It's also the remaining piece of a larger parcel that was vacated by City Council in 1996, so the 66-foot-by-15-foot tract immediately to the east of it was vacated, but the piece that's in our driveway remains a city alley, and we plan to combine the parcel with our property, and so we can complete our property just for a piece of land and guaranteed access to our garage. And so when we approached the Land Review Commission, we were presented with a price of $50 per square foot, and we just didn't feel that reflected the fair value of the property, given the fact that it is landlocked and so small, so we submitted an extensive mitigation request. Our main points were that, you know, the city vacated the immediately adjacent parcels, the parcels landlocked and accessible without trespassing on private property in all directions, and it's just so small that it can't be built on, and the only other potential buyer of the parcel didn't have an interest in purchasing it. So we actually met with the commission three times. After the first meeting, the case was tabled for members of the commission to complete more research. At the second meeting, a commission member moved to recommend $10 a square foot, and that motion ended in a tie of four to four. And then at the third meeting, we continued the conversation, and the commission ended up approving the $25 a square foot that they're aware of. So I guess one thing that frustrated us was that we didn't receive the City Attorney's analysis to determine the initial value until well after the third meeting, when everything was closed. Oh, hello?
Please continue.
Okay. We did, we did request documentation of how they determined $50 a square foot at each meeting, and we didn't get it until well after that, and, you know, we, and once we did receive that, the memo that they, for the price, you know, all of the comps were based on developable lots with utility access, and, you know, so we, we understand that this is a unique parcel and a unique situation, and there just really aren't any good comps. And I submitted in a packet all of the comps that were used by the city, submitted by commission members and submitted by us, and the comps submitted by the city and members of the commission show a range of values from about $9 a square foot to over 50 per square foot. Each of those comps is for a developable piece of land, some even have improvements such as a paved parking lot. And then also, one of the commission members spoke with a commercial real estate appraiser who told him that the parcel is essentially valueless, and, you know, we believe that the parcel has value and we want to buy it, but based on the comparables and the characteristics of the parcel, we believe that $10 a square foot is a fair value for what it is, given that it is so small and it's landlocked, and, and, you know, we just don't believe this kind of blanket approach of saying a fully developable lot is the same price as what one of the commission members said, a pile of rocks, because that's what it is. So I guess, I don't, do you have anything else to add?
Not really. I guess, well, maybe just that we do, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to mitigate. We weren't aware that that was a thing until we got the estimate at 50, and then, you know, kind of where our breath was taken away, I guess you could say, and then we embarked on this journey at this point and had those three meetings, which at the end of it, it kind of became a monthly ritual amongst the commission and us, and it was kind of fun to go through, but yeah, we appreciate that opportunity, you know, the willingness, I guess, to go from the original 50 to 25, but I think what we're kind of hung up on, at least me personally, was that at that second meeting, we seemed to, you know, almost walk away with it for 10, and so that made it just seem, again, not trivial, because a lot of research on both ends here went into this, both by, you know, the city's behalf and us, but we were kind of hung up on that, and we figured, you know, it'd be nice to present to you guys and give it one last try before moving forward with our, you know, kind of commitment to this piece of land and this property in this neighborhood in the city, so that's it.
Thank you so much. We also have Assistant City Attorney Richard Connollys with us tonight, and the City Attorney's process was called into question. Could you talk to us about what that process looks like and how we were able to reach this number where we're at tonight?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Favor, President Pro Tem Brown. The way this process works is when we do get an application like this, one of the professional staff in real estate takes a look at it, does his best to come up with some comparables, understanding that these are tiny parcels of land that generally are landlocked, taking into account the community that this is in, being in German Village and being even a small landlocked plot of land, German Village. He pegged the number at $50 a square foot. And so that was what was presented to the commission. Commission heard testimony, and after three hearings, they decided, based on what they heard, that a better number would be $25, and that's how, that's how we got here.
And I believe we also have Mark Lundin with us as well to provide some additional substance to the conversation.
Thanks, Councilmember Favor. I think Steve Wenzel has really covered it well. I think one key aspect with the Land Review Commission is the city is never requesting of the applicant to buy it. The applicant is always coming to the city requesting to purchase the property, and as Mr. Wenzel indicated, the Land Review Commission is a diverse group of departments as well as private sector representatives, and as the applicants reflected, there's a lot of information that was considered on this particular case, and we arrived at this value after the consideration of a number of different sources and appraisals for the property.
Can you talk a little bit about how the value is actually established? Is it just like regular comps? Is that, is that how we got here? That's to you, Mark.
Oh, yeah, it's more the city attorney that establishes the valuation.
Okay. Mr. Connollys, did you want to respond specifically?
Yes, and my understanding from talking to folks in recent years is that it was just regular comps that they, that their professional staff look at.
All right, I'll open the floor to my colleagues to ask any questions. I believe the homeowner is still with us to answer any questions that you all might have, or if you want to ask specifically to any of the present presenters tonight. Are there any questions or comments? Well, I will, I'll ask a question of the homeowners. You purchased the property in 2019, is that correct?
Yes.
Were you aware that you didn't own the land before you purchased the property?
We learned at closing when looking at the survey, but we saw it as...
We learned at closing, um, when looking at the survey, but we saw it as, you know, it's always been part of the property. It seems like it hasn't been an issue and we thought, you know, we could go through this process and buy it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you didn't have an idea of what that process would look like until you were actually in the, at the closing?
Yeah, just, well, at the closing, um, we just assumed that we might be able to buy it. But, um, yeah, we had no idea about the commission or anything like that or the steps.
Yeah, it showed up on the survey and then we, yeah, began reaching out to people and, um, trying to think.
Okay. Um, and why, why make the, the, um, why put forth the effort at this point in time to purchase, uh, this piece of property that, um, to your point, you feel like it doesn't have, it has minimal value?
Well, we just, so we, we bought the house with the intention of living here for a really long time. And, um, for us, I think, so I'm, I'm a lawyer and so I just get like paranoid about these property law issues. And I just, I didn't want to get into a situation down the road where somehow we would have to share that space or, um, you know, have some battle with access to our garage or something like that. And eventually if we are able to buy it, um, I think it would allow us more opportunity to develop, um, our parcel and make our home more valuable.
Yeah, it's kind of a dead space in our, on our, uh, boundaries. We use it, you know, again, to access the garage, but otherwise it's kind of just a, a dead corner of the, of the property. But if we own it, you know, there is landscaping on it. So it's been maintained by the property owner for the duration of, uh, of, you know, its use, I guess. Uh, actually there's like extensive landscaping on it. There, there's in the picture there. But, uh, but yeah, just peace of mind for working out fencing issues or landscaping issues or building issues. If, I don't know if we ever.
Cause there are fences there, but at this point I just don't really know what our kind of claim is to repair those fences and, um, and those just having that privacy and is important to us.
Yeah, and we did find out that evidently a previous owner had tried to, or at least had began this process to have found out the cost, I think, and then had abandoned it. But we, we kind of just, I don't know. One of, yeah, peace of mind, I guess, is ultimately, and we're leaving our commitment to the property, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I'm going to check in with my colleagues one more time and see if anyone has any questions or comments. Um, I did have a, uh, an opportunity to meet with, um, the folks that were very familiar with your case, uh, back in March. Um, and so a lot of the questions that I had about the, the, uh, your specific situation, um, I did get answers, uh, back, back at that point in time. And really it was about, uh, educating myself on what our process was at the city level and ensuring that, uh, that process was beyond reproach. Um, and so that's why we have, uh, uh, felt, uh, that it was an appropriate time to, to bring the legislation before the rest of the legislative body, uh, to, to call a decision for a vote. So, um, if there are no additional questions by my colleagues, I would, uh, move for passage as it's currently stated right now.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tim Brown.
Ordinance passed. Thank you. And I, and I just want to clarify for folks in our listening audience that we, the city, are not compelling anyone to purchase anything, purchase this property. So, um, I just want to make sure that that was, that was clear, uh, on the back end. So I, I appreciate, um, the homeowners taking their time out to, uh, to provide testimony and, uh, to further elevate, their, uh, their mitigating points before us. Pro Tim Brown, I just have one more piece of legislation.
Absolutely.
Ordinance nine four three, uh, dash 2021, to authorize the finance and management director to establish purchase orders and contracts with multiple vendors for the purchase of various traffic management and control commodities for the Department of Public Service to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 or more in a fiscal year against universal term contracts, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,825,000 from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund for the purchase of various traffic management and control commodities and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service utilizes pavement marking materials, sign manufacturing materials, school flashers, traffic signal commodities, and a variety of traffic management and control commodities throughout the city. These supplies and materials are necessary to ensure traffic safety throughout the city of Columbus. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tim Brown.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Chair Faber. Next, we have the Economic Development Committee. Councilmember Emmanuel Remy chairs that committee. Councilmember?
Thank you so much, Council President Pro Tim Brown. I have one item in the Economic Development Committee this evening. Ordinance 1068 2021, to authorize the expenditure of 1.5 million, 1,500,000 in the Development Taxable Bonds Fund for the remaining 75% of the contribution towards the 200 dedicated public spaces in the Gravity Two Structured Parking Facility and to declare an emergency. The Gravity Project Two LLC will design and construct Gravity Phase Two Urban Redevelopment Project located between Broad Street, State Street, McDowell Street and the CSX Railroad. The city, the developer and the Columbus Housing Partnership have entered into an economic development agreement dated September 27, 2019 to further the project in McDowell Place, the Lytec project to be constructed by Homeport pursuant to that EDA. The developer committed to dedicating at least 200 spaces for public use of the approximate 900 parking space structure parking facility, and the city agreed to the contribution of 10,000 for each of the dedicated public spaces in an amount not to exceed a total contribution of $2 million. City Council previously passed ordinance 911 2020 on May 18, 2020, to authorize the, oh, I lost my place, uh, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a neighborhood structured parking incentive contribution agreement with the developer and to authorize the transfer appropriation and expenditure of the first 25% of the contribution. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, the project's private financing was delayed. With the project moving forward again, the city is submitting subsequent legislation for the remainder of the contribution following the passage of the 2020 capital improvement budget. This legislation will authorize the expenditure of the remaining 75%. Director Stevens, do you have any additional comments on this ordinance this evening?
Good evening, President Pro Tim Brown, Chair Remy, members of council. Just a quick reminder, the Gravity Two project is a $120 million investment by Gravity and Homeport. It's going to result in 180,000 square feet of office space, 200 multi, multifamily residential units, 25 townhomes and 240, um, co-living bedrooms. Homeport is, uh, developing 50 affordable housing units at 60% AMI. And this is just an example of how we use our tools to invest in projects to leverage this type of, um, investment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Stevens. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? All right, seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tim Brown.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Remy. Um, and next we have Health and Human Services, which is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Chair Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, first ordinance is 1036 dash 2021. It's to authorize the Board of Health to modify and increase an existing contract with OSU College of Public Health for the continued COVID-19 contact tracing services and to authorize expenditure of $70,000 from the Health Department grant, Health Department Operating Fund to for set contract, to weigh the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus Code and to declare an emergency. This again is for the contract tracing, um, at Ohio State, the College of Public Health. And due to the immediate nature of the need for contract tracing, Columbus Public Health is requesting waiver of provisions of Columbus Code, Chapter 329, from the, from the Director of the Division of Finance and Management, following the procedure set forth under the ma- Mayor's Executive Order 202001 Declaration of State of Emergency. This contract covers all the identified close contacts of any COVID, COVID positive staff, faculty and students associated with the Ohio State University that live within the Columbus jurisdiction. OSU will communicate with all known close contacts of the identified COVID cases and educate, and educate them about the proper mitigation strategies such as current quarantine guidelines and said, and what to do if they experience symptoms associated with COVID. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tim Brown.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1084 dash 2021, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $3 million within the Columbus, um, Public Health Department's Operating Fund for personnel, materials and supplies and services for COVID-19 responsive initiatives and to declare any emergency. And this legislation authorizes a transfer of $3 million within the Columbus Public Health Operating Fund 2020, 20250 to the appropriate funding main accounts and object classes for 2021 COVID-19 response initiatives. As part of this 2021 operating budget for Columbus Public Health, $3 million was appropriated and placed in Fund 2050, Object Class 10, for future transfer for the appropriate use. These funds were an expansion to Columbus Public Health for the immediate response toward COVID-19. And funding has been provided for the services to include, but not limited to vaccine implementation, space rental, contract tracing, network services, media campaigns. In addition, the funding will allow for the purchase of equipment and supplies for the continued COVID-19 response. And to date, in 2021, Columbus Public Health employees have provided over 80,000 hours in staff time associated with COVID-19 response. This funding will help offset the additional staffing that is needed. And these funds have also been provided for the continued response of COVID. And these funds will be used to supplement expenses while awaiting additional funding from the American Rescue Funds, which is anticipated in, to arrive in May. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tim Brown.
Thank you. The final ordinance in my committee this evening is 1102 dash 2021, to authorize the Board of Health to modify and increase an existing contract with Emocha Mobile Health for continued COVID-19 contract tracing and to authorize expenditure of $358,430 from the Health Department's Operating Fund for said contract. And again, to weigh the competitive bidding provisions of, of the city code and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will increase this co- the contract amount by an additional $358,430 for a total contract amount not to exceed $1,432,429. This contract oversees, oh, this contract, this contract covers all the identified close contacts of any COVID positive residents living within the Columbus and Worthington jurisdiction, with the exception of OSU students, faculty and staff, which we just passed. Emocha reaches out to close contacts of identified COVID cases and educates them about the proper mitigation strategies such as the current guidelines for quarantine and what to do with the experienced symptoms associated with COVID. And then Emocha also notifies Columbus Public Health of any contacts that have been symptomatic during their quarantine. If there's, um, and if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tim Brown.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Brown. I would like to, um, I know that there were some technical difficulties and to, before we end the meeting and because I have an event that's coming up. I know Ms. Rachel Martin is on the, is, um, present. And if she could take a couple minutes just to share her event. And, um, again, we thank her for the work that she's doing around mental health awareness. And if we could give her just a, a minute or so to, to make a few comments, I would appreciate that.
Sure, absolutely. And we have, um, one more, uh, agenda item to do that we can do, um, after Ms. Martin. But we'll just keep that in mind to get done before 6:30. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Thank you very much, um, Councilmember Pro Tim Brown, Councilwoman Tyson, Councilwoman Favors and other council members. I'm just honored to receive this resolution. NAMI Franklin County is, um, has been in existence since 1987. And I have been with them for the past 12 years, raising awareness and advocating for people who are living with mental health conditions and their families. And we are just honored to be able to do a few extra things in our community like those 15 billboards in Franklin County. So as you drive around, we educate people on mental health and their conditions. And we make sure that we help people every single day. In addition to that, we are, um, going to reach 50,000 people, African Americans in barber and beauty shops, um, raising awareness. And we are partnering with, um, NAMI Ohio and, um, the African American Wellness Agency to educate beauty and barber folks and people in our community because it takes a village, um, to raise a child. And we are working towards, um, towards that with the African American Beauty and Barber. Finally, Sources of Strength is an, um, evidence-based model that we are bringing to Columbus, to our community-based programs, to work with kids and teaching kids how to be, um, uh, support group leaders and, um, and, and an adult to be with them. And we are going to implement the program with Black Girls and, um, the Franklin County Youth Council and other community-based programs in our community to help get them the help and the care that they need. So again, we are honored, um, to receive this, this resolution. And thank you very much for this, these few minutes. I appreciate it.
Ms. Martin, can you also share your, the, I think you have an event coming up?
Oh, I'm, yes, we do. Um, we have our NAMI Walk that is coming up, June the 12th. And because of COVID, we won't be able to gather like we usually do in Wolf Park. So we're going to ask people to walk in their communities. And, um, so we are excited about doing our walk once again. We typically raise a lot of money that goes for raising awareness and everything that NAMI Franklin County does is free of charge. So, um, please think about walking in your community, gathering a team of folks. We would be honored, um, to, uh, to do that, to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. And certainly thank you for the work that you're doing in our community. As you said, your services do not cost anyone. And lastly, how you are expanding your services to even reach more young people through, um, your new initiative. So thank you for, very much. And just appreciate you bringing, you continuing your work, but also raising awareness, um, around mental health. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Now, we have one, one more ordinance, um, uh, before we, we close the meeting, uh, back on page 19, I believe. Councilmember Faber.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Brown. In the Swallow My Minority Business Committee, we have ordinance 81 X dash 2021, to approve and to declare the necessity to implement the Plan of Services adopted by the Short North Special Improvement District of Columbus Incorporated and the necessity to levy a special assessment for the services set forth in said Plan of Services upon the lots and lands benefiting under the plan and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments by my colleagues, I'd first move to amend to 30-day legislation by, uh, voice.
Second.
Clerk, uh, can you please call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
And President Pro Tem Brown?
Abstain.
Thank you. At next move to waive the second reading by voice.
Second.
Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Brown?
Abstain.
Thank you. And last, I would move for adoption by voice vote.
Second.
Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Brown?
Abstain.
Thank you. That is all we have in the Small and Minority Business Committee.
Thank you, council member. We, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I just want to take a moment to congratulate Council President Harden. We've had a bit of a baby boom on council, and I am so happy for him and his husband Ben for having welcomed Noah Edward, Noah Edward Harden Zachrich, last week. So we are, we are thinking of them. We are happy for them, and I am really glad that it's coinciding with when we're all maybe able to see each other outdoors again sometime soon because he's too handsome in the pictures I've seen to not meet him in person. So congratulations to Council President. Now, I, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Great. Regular meeting 20 is adjourned. We do not have any non-agenda speakers. Councilmember Tyson, would you like to move straight into zoning or take a few minutes? Oh, you're on mute.
I'm ready. No, I think we're ready. I'm ready.
Okay, great. I will, I will virtually gavel the meeting. Regular meeting number 21 will now come to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
May I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
Second. All right, so moved.
Is there a second?
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee, and all members serve on the committee.
Thank you. Thank you. So I will be, again, so will the clerk, please read the ordinance numbers into the record that we need, that will need a second reading waived.
Ordinance is 0911, 0949, ordinance is 1041, 1042, 1043, 1044, 1060, 1061, 1085, 1086, 1089, 1091, and 1092-2021.
Thank you. I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you. Only advice to the City Attorney's Office, anyone here who wishes to speak for or against any council variance, including staff, must be sworn in prior to giving testimony. We do so prior to beginning the reading of each variance on the agenda. So the first ordinance is ordinance 846-2021 to rezone 1550 Kenny Road being 1.04 acres located on the east side of Kenny Road, 220 feet south of King Avenue, from C4 Commercial District to AR3 Apartment Residential District. The following, the applicant is preferred living, care of attorney David Hodge. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The C's recommendation is approval before the fifth by Northwest Air Commission's recommendations approval, two to zero. I first move, I want to amend to, amend to emergency, and they want to amend to emergency because this property is, we need to begin the, the, conclude the permitting and commence construction for redevelopment on a property which includes a provision for affordable housing. So I first move to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you, and I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Passed.
Thank you. The variance for the same, for this same property is, again, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. This, and this is ordinance number 847-2020 to grant a variance for the provisions of Sections 3312.21A, Landscaping and Screening 3312.27, Parking, Parking Setback Line 3312.29, Parking Space 3333.15C, Basis of Commuting Area 3333.18, Building Lines 3333.24, Rear Yard of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 1550 Kenny Road to permit reduced development standards for a 71-unit building in the AR3 Apartment Residential District. The applicant, again, is preferred living, care of attorney David Hodge, proposed use of the multi-unit residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the fifth by Northwest Area Commission's recommendation is approval, two to zero. There are no questions or comments. I first move to, move to, move to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Amended.
Amendment, submit to the clerk.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Amended.
Thank you. I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Passed.
Okay, thank you. The next ordinance is, again, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. It is ordinance 911-2021 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District, 3332.05 Area District Lot With Requirements, 3332.15, R4 Area District Requirements, and 3332.19, fronting 3332.25 Maximum Side Yards Required, and 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, and 3332.27 Rear Yard of Columbus City Codes for property located at 1135 Neil Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling and a single-unit dwelling carriage house on one lot with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is Mike Navarro, care of Daniel Ferdeman, and the proposed use is a two-single-unit dwelling, and a single, and a single-unit dwelling. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The 12th Village Commission's recommendation, recommendation is incomplete, and so with that, I will like to move to table indefinitely.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Tabled.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 949-2021 to rezone 3415 Vision Drive being eight, 9.82 acres located in the north and northwest side of Patriot, Patriot Boulevard, 700 feet, 700 feet south of Vision Drive from the LP1 Limited Parking District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is JP Morgan Chase, care of attorney Mike Shannon. The proposed use are solar panels on car ports in an existing parking lot, and the C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1041-2021 to rezone 3735 Eastern Way being 59.16 acres located in the southeast corner of Eastern Way and Sunbury Road, from the LM Limited Manufacturing District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Morsel Holdings Company, care of attorney Jeffrey Brown. The proposed use is mixed-use development. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
This is variance for that property we just, the ordinance we just passed, and it is anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you, attorney Brown. This is ordinance 1042-2021 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03C for permitted uses, 3361.02 permitted uses, and 3312.4949C minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 3734 Eastern Way to permit ground floor residential uses in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District and to repeal ordinance number, let's see, 0473-202011, passed July 18th of 2011. The applicant is Morsel Holdings Company, care of attorney Jeff, Ms. Jeffrey Brown. The proposed use is a ground floor residential use. The C Department's recommendation is approval. A Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1043-2021 to rezone 3850 Stelter Road being 91.01 acres located on the east and west sides of Stelter Road, north of the R1 Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Morsel Holdings Company, the care of attorney Jeff Brown. The proposed use is a mixed-use development. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Passed.
All right, let's see. The variance for this property, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. The applicant is, oh, I better read it. The variance is 1044-2021 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03C for permitted uses, 3361.02 permitted uses, and 3312.49C minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 3850 Stelter Road to permit ground floor residential uses in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Morsel Holdings Company, care of attorney Jeff Brown. Proposed use is ground floor residential uses, and the C Department's recommendation is approval. The Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Brown, you're, Mr. Brown, you're here today a lot here. We've got a lot of legislation for you this evening in that, in that, in that same corridor. So again, the next ordinance is 1060-2021 to rezone 3650 Sunbury Road being 11.64.64 acres located at the northeast corner of Sunbury Road and McCutcheon Road from a PUD8 Plan Unit Development District and R1 Residential District to I Institutional, to the I Institutional District. And the applicant happens to be, oh, Delaina, I'm sorry, Delaina Cox, care of attorney David Brown. The proposed use is a religious facility and school. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. If there are no questions or comments, we move, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number 1061-2021 to rezone 790 North Nelson Road being one acre located on the east side of North Nelson Road, 90, 90 feet south of East Fifth Avenue from the R4 Residential District and C4 Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is the City of Columbus, care of Michael Jones. The proposed use is a City of Columbus Police and Fire Joint Wellness Center. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the North Central Air Commission's recommendation is approval. And it really is great to be able to have a wellness center for our safety forces, especially these days and times. So if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Passed.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. This ordinance is 1085-2021 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.037, R2F Residential District, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3332.05A Area District Lot With Requirements, 3332.14, R2F Area District Requirements, and 3332.19 Fronting on a Public Street, 3332.25 Maximum Side Yards Required, and 3332.26C1 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, and 3332.27 Rear Yard for the property located at 374 East Whittier Street to permit a single-unit dwelling, a carriage house on the rear of a lot developed with a single-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in this R2F, R2F Residential District. The applicant is Chris LLC, care of attorney David Hodge, and the proposed use is a single-unit dwelling and a single-unit carriage house on one lot. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is also approval, 15 to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1086-2021 to rezone 4398 Trabu Road being 10.3 acres located on the north side of Trabu Road, 300 feet south of Arlington Gate Lane from the R1 Residential District to the LC2 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is the American Society of Non-Destructive Testing, care of Geo Tangent. Proposed use is an office commercial development. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the West Side Ode Air Commission's recommendation is also approval, seven to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Passed.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Ordinance number 1089-2021 is to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.033, R2 Residential District, 3332.12, R2 Area District Requirements, 3332.19, Fronting 3332.626B Minimum Side Yard Permitted, 3332.27 Rear Yard, and 3332.29 Side or Rear Yard Obstruction of Columbus City Codes for property located at 306 Leland Avenue to permit a single-unit dwelling and a single-unit carriage house on the same lot with reduced development standards in the R2 Residential District. The applicant is Kurt Mortensen. The proposed use is a single-unit dwelling with a single-unit carriage house. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Clintonville Air Commission's recommendation is approval, seven to one. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tem Brown.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1091-2021. It is to rezone 915 West Fifth Avenue being 2.04 acres located on the south side of West Fifth Avenue, 150 feet east of Norton Avenue from the M Manufacturing District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is W. The applicant is WCP Monarch LLC, care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a mixed-use commercial and apartment residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the fifth by Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval, three to two. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clark, call the roll. Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tim Brown. Passed.
Thank you. The variance for that same location is ordinance 10902-2021. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
Answer, I will. I will.
The applicant is WCP Monarch LLC, care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a mixed-use commercial and apartment residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the fifth by Northwest Air Commission's recommendation is approval, three to two. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clark, call the roll. Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tim Brown.
Thank you, President, thank you, President Pro Tim Brown. Can we also just take a moment? I know we didn't do it at the beginning of the meeting. Certainly, just to take a moment and just offer our prayers and condolences to our, our clerk for the City of Columbus, clerk Angie Blevins, on the passing of her father. And if we could just take a moment, just to, a moment of silence, and to offer our condolences to Angie at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tim Brown, and we'll just keep her in our prayers. Thank you.
Yes, we will.
That's all I have on zoning.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Thank you for including that. Seeing no further business to come before the zoning committee, thank you, Chair Tyson. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Clark, call the roll. Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Pro Tim Brown.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great rest of your night.